I ask everybody to please stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and limited to justice.
With that, for the record, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the north wall of legislative chambers in the back there. There's an automatic defibrillator in case needed for health reasons. And also, if you have any electronic devices or cell phones, we've asked you to please silence them, mute them, or turn them off. With that, we will call to order the Board of Equalization meeting. Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Note for the record, for the public, we don't have electronic boards today, so this will be old school and roll call. With that, item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, November 19th, 2019. Item B is called for a meeting set Tuesday, December 10th as the date for the hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan. Roll call.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity to comment on Board of Equalization-related matters not listed on the board's agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seen none. We'll go to resolutions. Items D, E, F, G, and H are pretty routine. What's the will of the board?
I would like to approve of items C through H and the...
Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote. I mean, roll call.
Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We're now called to order the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority Board.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle is absent. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Noxious Weed Control Authority meeting held on Tuesday, January 29th, 2019. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan. Roll call.
Commissioner Duda.
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item two is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity to comment on noxious weed control items not listed on the board. Are there any citizens' comments? Seen none. Item three is a resolution placing a special assessment on the property in Douglas County. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Kraft, second. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duda. Roll call.
May I ask, Mr. Chair, is that included adjournment?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So Commissioner Boyle, would you want to vote on the resolution placing special assessments on property in Douglas County? All right. Commissioner Kavanaugh? Okay. Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson is absent. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Item A is menacing, item one is menacing claims. Item A is approval of the minutes of the tri-county meeting held on Monday, November 4th, 2019, and the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, November 19th. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Kraft, second by Commissioner Duda. Roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Item...
Motion passes.
Item two is the consent agenda. There are seven items. I'd ask for item C four to be removed. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Kraft.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan, and that's to approve the consent agenda with the removal of C four that will be ordered separately. Roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft? Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Item C four. Motion by Commissioner Duda. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. I need to abstain because of being on that board. Roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?
I pass.
Okay. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Well, Mr. Chair, do you want to do...
I mean, sorry, abstain. I'm in routine. Sorry.
Okay.
Yes, I'm abstaining.
For the record, that Commissioner Boyle votes yes, and Commissioner Rogers abstains on item C four.
Item three is recognition and proclamation. Item letter A is a recognition of the following county employees retired. Cheryl L. Phillips was retired from the Douglas County Health Center after 23 years, and we wish her a happy and well retirement. What's the will of the board on item A? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan. Roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item four is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioner-related items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seen none. We'll move to public hearing. Item A is Class 1-123348 License for Beer, Wine, and Distilled Spirits on sale only for Hook Solo LLC doing business as Tanner's Bar and Grill, 19102 Q Street, Omaha, Nebraska, Douglas County, 68135, and Manager Application for Brett C. Clure at 1636 South 186 Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68130. With that, I will open the public hearing.
Good morning, Chairman Rogers, members of Douglas County Board, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Appearing on behalf of the applicant, this is actually just a restructuring of Tanner's, so same owners but different structures, so nothing will change with this business. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Seen none. Any other public comment on this item? We'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the...? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item B is public hearing and permit discussion and presentation of testimony regarding the revision of the Department of General Assistance Primary Healthcare Network Guidelines. Ms. Melissa Sedwick, we will open the public hearing on this now.
Good morning. We provided everybody with the projected or the proposed revisions for our guidelines. We haven't received any additional feedback from what we've disclosed to you guys, and so we're hoping to move forward with those proposed revisions unless anybody is here to speak today about it, or if you guys have any questions or concerns.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for that. You know, we discussed over at the department and later in committee hearings, the increase in the rent subsidy. Do you want to address that a little bit?
Yes, we're proposing to do a increase to the rent. Currently, we can do a max benefit for a single individual for $500 a month, and we are proposing that we increase that to $600 a month. We did a rent survey, and right now, if we keep it at $500 a month, it only opens it up to about 3% of the rentals that are available within Douglas County. If we open it up to $600 a month, it opens it up to about 17% of the rentals within Douglas County. So that's what we're proposing to do. We're also proposing to increase our... We have a boarding and rooming house and a shared living where we just want to make those equal at $300 each. Right now, we have one at $250 and one at $300. They're both very similar situations, and we want to treat them as such and increase those both to $300.
On that last point, could you just expand a little bit on what that service actually provides?
So with a boarding and rooming house, that is going to be if somebody is living...
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing you.
With a boarding or rooming house, that's going to be if somebody is in kind of like a sleeping room situation where they are provided a, kind of like a dormitory-style living situation, and then shared living is if somebody would be living with their, you know, mom, dad, cousin, friend, where they're sharing everything. And right now, we're paying $250 for shared living, and we're paying $300 for boarding and rooming house situation. So we want to have it be where it's $300 just for both of those situations.
Okay. And with these changes, I'm sure that you've calculated this, if you could share with us what the projected economic impact of these changes would be?
Yes, this will be effective in January, so the impact to the 1920 budget year will be no more than $150,000 based on our current clientele, and then the impact to the 2021 budget will be no more than $300,000, which we have in within our budget right now.
Just looking forward, we did discuss the possibility of instituting some type of an energy subsidy, which I'm not sure, but we don't currently have something like that in place that we might be anticipating looking at in the future.
We were talking about looking at the energy subsidies that are already provided to the state and getting more information on how those look. Right now, we don't really have information on if somebody is able to go ahead and apply and receive an energy subsidy if they're not already in a place. Right now, for example, if somebody applies for general assistance, they don't already have a place to go. We can approve them pending property certification, and so once they move in, we can go ahead and provide that rent. So it's kind of like they have a voucher. Once they have a place to go, they are eligible. So we're hoping to get more information based on the state's program. So it wouldn't necessarily be an impact at all to our budget. It's going ahead and taking advantage of the state's services that they should be providing to our clientele for energy assistance.
Good. We've also discussed the phenomena that's occurred over, you know, as long as I've been here, of general assistance underspending their budget and returning to the county unexpended funds. For the just expired fiscal year of 1819, what were those amounts?
For 1819, we returned $800,000.
I'm sorry, say again?
$800,000.
$800,000?
Yes.
We could essentially double our rent subsidy and still return money to the county based on that projection and those numbers that you just outlined. So almost a million dollars that was returned. You know, it's important that we have these annual updates because I think that, you know, you do what you can relative to the constraints of your rules. But going forward, things like rent subsidy, things like in-house assistance, and things like energy subsidies are things that, you know, we could easily afford, and we should probably discuss with an eye towards the next fiscal year.
Yeah, and we also want to keep in mind, we don't want to put, we don't want to provide so much assistance that if the clients... Our goal is for them to be self-sufficient.
Right.
We don't want to make it where they get a job and they can't be self-sufficient based on we're able to pay $700, $800 in benefits to them, but they can't do it based on the benefit, the income that they're making. So that's what was something we always try to keep in mind, because we don't want them to pay 50% of their income that they could potentially be making based on, you know, renting utilities. That's not our goal.
One more question.
You had to wait the board.
Sure.
Commissioner Moore?
That last comment kind of bothers me. I don't think we ought to be monitoring people. I think if someone is fortunate enough to get a job paying $4 an hour, that we should be willing to pull back their assistance a little bit so they can have the $4 an hour job and still get help from us. So I'd like to talk, I'll talk to you about that sometime, but I don't like that. I'll label it the way it is. I don't like that kind of Republican approach. I'm also very curious about the problems that you run into with people, some that I observe. I live east, I live on 10th Street, and I'm in the east part of the city quite a bit, and I do go to the parts, of course, but in my part of the city, I see, frequently see used cars, usually General Motors cars, Buicks and Oldsmobiles, old ones like 1981 and '82, off to the side of the road with a woman out trying to whip the hood up, trying to figure out what in the world to do, and usually a kid or two in the car. I think we need to talk about some kind of help with keeping their cars running, and also, you know, it just, it makes me pretty angry. The cars look nice, but boy, internally, they're just mush. And I think we need to get involved in trying to help people keep their cars running because lots of times, that's their lifeline to work, taking kids places, and I'd like us, I'll talk to you more about that, too. And in line with that, I'd like to see us develop a contract with a towing company to tow those cars and take care of them. And that, another thing that I've been working on with Corrections is to develop an auto repair facility, maybe even there at Corrections or someplace else that people can, when they get out of our facility, they can go to work there. So I've been talking to some companies that own those kind of companies. Another one that I brought up, too, that I find out is coming around pretty well, is loaning money. You know, I'm not impressed that the legislature is going to be changing the law so that the maximum amount of interest can be is 36% on a loan. No deal. That's, that's, in my lifetime, that's a sin. Okay? That's wrong. The other thing I get concerned about, I was at Baker's on Saddle Creek Road in Leavenworth a couple of weeks ago, and there was, I was getting gas, and there was a man who was terribly, had a terrible time walking across the area where you gas the car, so I had to wait for him to get through. And he had a backpack on that was really heavy, plus he had the most god-awful-looking walker I ever saw. It was so unstable. So I decided I was going to offer him a ride home, you know, but I got my gas, and I went around the corner, and I couldn't see him. He was laying down. He fell down at the bus stop. Well, I'm not in a position to help anybody up, so I called the rescue squad. So they came and got him up, and they have a policy where they couldn't take him anywhere. So I said, okay, I'll give him a ride. And they said, okay, we'll follow you. So I put him in my car and took him home. And then the firefighters got him out of the car, and then they did have liability. I shouldn't say this publicly. They had liability getting him in the house, which the city is watching for as liability. And I don't blame them, but it's one of those things where people fall and not, they're not, they're being asked to pick up a lot of old people like me when we fall down, you know? So we need to really explore this sort of thing, because there's already a lot of problems out there that people are not getting handled. I offered him transportation. He was very independent. He said, thanks, but no thanks. He asked me if I was a Democrat, and I said, yes. And then he started talking to me about Christian religion, so I don't know where he was on all that, but anyhow. I really would, I'd like to look into these things because I'm curious also about, we used to have an appeal process that got changed because I was raising too much hell about it, I think. Claire Smiles, he knows about this. But anyway, what happened was that we would have, I remember we had an elderly woman come down who had her benefits taken away because she loaned her granddaughter $200 to buy a car, and that was over the threshold. So she lost her benefits. And I don't know if we're still doing that. I have a suspicion that we are, and they're just not bringing the, they're earning any appeals here because we're too liberal with giving away money, and maybe I'm too much of a bleeding heart, but are you still hearing appeals from people? Are you taking away benefits based on those kind of situations?
We still have our income and resource...
I'm sorry?
We still have our income and resource guidelines, so people are still denied benefits. But we, as far as our appeals go, we still work with Bob McGowan, but I don't think I've even seen him at all this year because we really try to work in-house, and we do a lot of resins where we look at the client situation to reason that case. They're very, very far and few in between compared to where they were five, six years ago, where they were pretty often. But we also have done a lot of things where we've tried to help the client out. Right now, we have one of the things that we started doing two years ago is exempting, when somebody gets a job before they were cut off the program right away. Right now, we do 100% income disregard for three months of employment, so we're able to pay their rent. And one of the other things that we're proposing in our guidelines is to allow them to have some cash in their pocket as well. So that's another thing where we didn't have before. So there's a lot of things that we're trying to look at, and also looking at, maybe it's a financial impact to our department keeping them on the program, but what would be the financial impact to the countywide if they were kicked off the program, lose their housing, end up at county jail, or at like one of the hospitals, things like that. So we do, I think, a really good job. Our caseworkers are pretty empathetic to the client situations, so we're not seeing a lot of those situations anymore.
Okay. I'd like to, if you would, please send me a note on who's, you know, not necessarily names, but situations where that happens. And lastly, I'll say, I know the time's out, but I want, and we'll get, I'll call you. Your department's done some really terrific work. I've called, and I've had people in trouble, and you've done a really great job, and I appreciate that very much. But I do want to get together with you and talk further. And one last thing I'll say, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I kind of, I go online and look at places for sale. I'm recently widowed, and so I kind of look at places, ways to drive down my expenses. And I, yesterday, I was looking at places for rent in my district, and you know, boy, there's nothing for $600 that you'd want to live in, or I would. I think you need to, we need to take a serious look at, just go on Zillow sometime, or Trulia, or the Omaha Realtors Board, and look for rentals, and it's really an eye-opener what's available. So, and I think it keeps them in a certain part of the city. It kind of corrals them. I don't know if that's right or not, but anyhow, I would like to ask you to look at those things. I'll give you a call. You're doing a really good job in spite of my, this sounds like criticism. It's not. Okay. Thanks a lot. I'll call you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Just following up on our discussion earlier, I appreciate the work that you've done on this and the information that you've shared with us, and I probably would ask you to come back for a committee hearing that we could examine more closely the metric that you mentioned relative to people getting on general assistance and then moving off of general assistance, and how successful we've been in helping in that transition. I suppose that there are some people who are more successful than others, and I'm just wondering, do you keep records of that?
Well, in the past, people have typically just dropped off our program because how our program worked, as I stated, is that if somebody was employed, they were no longer eligible for our services, so they just stopped showing up. How we do things now is that we'll exempt their income for three months and still pay their rent. So we're now seeing clients stick around a little bit longer. So we're now able to start tracking that, but there's things that we're trying to do in-house to work on our job training program, to really help clients work towards employment and work on those soft skills that, some of them, it's just the soft skills that they need to gain employment. But we're, we need to do a better job tracking it, absolutely, but I think that we are moving towards that where there's plenty of our clients, I'd say it's 50/50 split. 50% of them are employable and 50% of them are pending social security, mental health issues, substance abuse issues, that we are there because they are pending social security, and they're not going to be employable.
Sure. So I guess, you know, that's the thing that I'd like to see us work on is, you know, what, what is that breakdown? And, you know, we get reports from various departments of the county relative to people that they serve, people that pass through their service, retention rates, all of those things. That's exactly what we're talking about here. And so I think that we'll have a follow-up hearing on this, just so you know, so that we can have regular updates, you know, from general assistance relative to we have this percent that are pretty much there for the duration, and then we have this percent that falls in a different category, maybe you're transitioning into some employment. And the services that we provide to that cohort, you know, to assist in that transition, I know that there are things that general assistance does and the county does generally to help people with different difficulties they may face, from poverty to chemical dependency to you name it. So health issues as well. I'm just giving you kind of a heads up that I think that it would benefit all of us to see that metric going forward. And when we're talking about that, we will also be talking about this unmet need that we probably want to look at relative to the surplus that the general assistance department annually returns to the county. So we'll try to balance all of those things going forward, but I don't want you to be surprised when we get the hearing notice that that's what we're going to be talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on, on the guidelines? Okay. We're going to close the public comment, and it actually will be taken at a later date. Public hearing is closed. With that, we'll go on to item seven, which is the committee discussion and action. Letter A is the Finance Committee. Item one is the Budget Report. Commissioner Morgan?
As presented.
Okay. We'll go on to Human Resources. Item one is the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service. That is as submitted. Item two, excuse me, item three is a resolution to approve Douglas County's 2020 Legislative Priorities and new legislative initiatives we file for the 106th Second Session of the Legislature. Last week, we went through these. Today, we're going to make final approval. Anything you want to say on this before we go, Marcos? Okay. Mr. Commissioner Moore, and I'll come to you, Teresa.
I saw that list last week, and I wondered if, I'd like us to take a position on those, particularly the change with the Assessors Office, though I don't have to do battle with the, with Mike Goodwillie. Every time he comes down, it's very awkward. Are we, is that on our agenda? Are we going to try to get that changed, that law, 75 or 77 something?
This is just approving what we're going to get, ask the lobbyists to see if they can get support for, but until there's a bill, there's nothing to...
Okay, well, there's others that aren't bills either, but I guess I'm just saying, are we, is that later in the agenda? You look puzzled, Marcos. Am I asking a bad question?
No, no. Marcos C. Martin, Douglas County Labor and Legislation. So, yeah, Commissioner, I think it's number five on that, within that resolution, that would go to the homestead exemption. Is that the item?
Well, the homestead and also the other stuff where he comes down and get, make all these presentations, and then we have no choice. We have to say, yes, we'll do what you tell us. We'll behave.
Okay.
I want to either be able to roll back, say, no, we're not doing that, or I want the option. I don't like this stuff where we do smoke and mirrors with the taxpayers. They think that it's an appeal, and it's not.
Okay.
So that's what I want to get fixed. Either we have the authority to change it, or they don't come down here. One or the other. One or the other.
What we're doing today is agreeing to support these proposed pieces. That means the lobbyists will go and try to find people to introduce them. So this is not supporting anything today except our initiative to...
Well, I think we are, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, if you approve it.
You're asking lobbyists to go things, do things you want to support. I want this on that list. I don't want to wait around. I'd like to, I'd like to get that thing repealed because it's a really bone of contention. I think it's really, it's a real disservice to the taxpayers. It bothers me a great deal.
That's not what five is?
Let me look at it. I managed to, you'll love this. I just went out on my website, so...
Okay, let me, let me read it while you look.
It'll take me a couple days to get back.
Five is support a legislative initiative to revise the Revenue and Taxation Section or appropriate section to revise the homestead exemption provisions to provide greater discretion to the county boards and setting appeals of homestead exemption denials.
It's more than homestead. It's the stuff that Mike comes down on, you know, property, some, some company that wants, some church that forgets it's exemption on property. They don't file for a exemption, a nonprofit. We have the same problem with the Treasurer's Office where these, autism last week got zapped by about 11 vehicles. They failed to apply, so they don't get their exemption. You know, I think we ought to be able to say, you know, I don't, I don't want to go toe-to-toe all the time, although I'm willing to, but I want that chapter changed, and it's the one that Mr. Goodwillie comes down on, and the one that I chewed him out pretty good on recently.
Well, the, let's do...
That's what I had in there, I thought.
Okay. Well, let's do this. Is there a motion, a second from the board to approve this, then we'll see if there's a motion to amend?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion by Commissioner Moore, a second by Commissioner Duda. What are you proposing as an amendment language to five?
Well, I thought I had it, but again, I can't, I can't pull up my computer. Can this be handled? When are we, when are we next meeting? Two weeks from now, three weeks from now, or something?
Two.
Is it too late?
Well, you can talk when the second is when we'll have the, oh, jeez. The second is when we'll have the meeting with the legislature at...
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. Then Marcos, you sent me a really good memo on what that chapter was. It was 77-blah, blah, 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 that brought these people, they can appeal down to us. You know what I'm talking about.
Mm-hmm.
It's on failing to report automobiles that they had, missing a deadline, you know, and they put it on the agenda so that it's approving something that is already done. We have no discretion. So, I mean, I can call Mike and ask him what it is. He'll rattle off right away, but that's what I want on this. I'll call him right now and ask him.
Okay. The counsel, Mr. Ash, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Teresa York County Attorney's Office. Thank you, Chair Rogers. I simply want to express that the county attorney's office does have some concerns about one, two, and four. I know we're in a very preliminary stage here, so I think our office would appreciate Marcos reaching out as those items get flushed out further, but those do have, the possibility to have wide, wide impact on criminal and juvenile justice, and we would like an opportunity to provide additional input.
Noted. Mr. Clerk?
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk.
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. Well, the main person this is for is on the phone, but I was just gonna say the vehicles, that's the county treasurer, that's not the county assessor. And normally, it's, I don't mean to speak for anyone in the treasurer's office, but I feel like normally when they are recommending a denial of a tax exemption, it's usually either someone works for a church or nonprofit, but the vehicle actually happens to be under their name, not the nonprofit or church's name. Or there's a certain timeline that the vehicle has to get the exemption and it's sometimes people are too early or sometimes too late and it's just a statutory restriction the treasurer's office has that it's gotta be, I don't know the dates or the time, but I know it's gotta be within the, someone's gotta file this exemption application within a certain timeline. So, normally, those are the two times where they're, the treasurer's office is recommending a denial. The other thing that, there may be other situations, but the other one that comes up a lot is someone files a personal property tax return late and so the assessor, they have to, there's a penalty that they have to put on that. But people are allowed to file a protest. Now, the assessor's office is very good at sending out a letter that says, you can only, you could submit a protest, but be aware it's gotta fall under these two circumstances. Either you did file on time and for some reason, we just didn't catch it and you, you know, you provide proof that you filed it on time, or I feel like maybe there's personal property that the assessor's office says they have that they don't. I may be off on that one. But anyway, the point is, they're given directions that you can file a protest, but just know the board's only allowed to take action if it falls under these two circumstances. So, my personal opinion, I get why Commissioner Boyle and everyone might be frustrated, but from a taxpayer standpoint, it's worth a shot. I mean, you can't, the worst the board could do is say, no. It's not like the board can say, no, and we're gonna up your penalty another 50%. So, I think most of these folks just say, well, why not? I'll give it a shot. I mean, I feel like most of the time, these folks don't even show up because I think they realize that it's probably not gonna go their way. I mean, we do have people that show up, no doubt, but anyway, that's my, that statute on the personal property is 77-1233.04 and 77-1233.06. So, I don't know if I helped at all, but so the background on some of the items that come before the board.
Well, Tim, did you come down and talk on that specifically? Did you come back, talk on it? You wanna come down?
Sorry, I'm a little off route. What's right? Now, I was watching Tim Kavanaugh at treasurer's office. Ran up the escalator. I would clarify any questions you might have about what we actually are recommending and we're not the decision maker. We do our due diligence and then present our findings for your approval or denial.
Well, you get in line now, Mike. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Just for a little clarification on what Commissioner Boyle is asking for, is this, like, an addition to point five on, on this list that you're asking to add something to that? I'm just trying to find, find out what, what exactly we're talking about here. Mike?
I'm sorry. I'm trying, can't get my computer.
No, I understand.
What I'm talking about, we don't have discretion. I was listening to what you were saying there. People don't have a shot at it. When they come down there, there is no shot. They have no ammunition. When the treasurer's office, I'll ask him, let me, if I'm wrong, when the treasurer's office comes up and says, no exemption for the Autism Association of Nebraska, they got eight vehicles, they don't get, they don't get treated as a nonprofit because they blew the deadline. Can the county board say, no, we're gonna give it to them?
I, I'm not aware of that. I thought that we approved, or you approved 16 vehicles last week.
Well, I, we may, let's forget about them. Let's say that Church of the Living God comes down and blows off two vans or something and so you've gotta list, say, no tax exemption for these people. Okay. Can we overrule you?
That would be a legal question, but we only make a recommendation. You're the decision maker.
Well, we're not.
Okay.
When you come down with that, we, we have to say, okay, yeah, we'll do what you tell us. We'll do what you tell us. I don't believe we have any discretion. I could be wrong, but this is.
I don't know.
Okay, well, that's what I think, I think we're, we're being told how to behave. And so, the taxpayer, this Church of the Living God comes down here and they're sitting in the audience and they blew the deadline, they have a new secretary or whatever it is, and so that's too bad. They don't get, they don't get the exemption. And I don't think we have the authority to overrule you, is what I'm saying. And whether or not you do, that is a legal discretion.
We're not making the decision. You're not overruling us. We're presenting our findings to you.
I know that. That's just technical talk. You're saying, here's the talk, they don't get the exemption. Okay, you're saying, we've arrived at the fact, they blew the deadline, so our recommendation, our result is, they don't get the exemption. So, I'm saying, do we just go, okay, okay, boss, we'll do exactly what you told us? Or can we say, I overrule that? And I don't think you're the one to answer.
We're not making a rule.
Well, Tim, hold on. Let me, let me make sure.
We're talking words, Tim.
Let me, let me just make sure the question's answered because you're on, you're on Commissioner Kavanaugh's time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So.
Okay. So, what I was getting at is, and I think I understand, what you're proposing is that we seek a legislative change to the law that affects the treasurer's recommendation to this board relative to the tax or tax-exempt status of motor vehicles.
Right.
And our power to alter that recommendation. Is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. This, and I see Mr. Goodwilly's here, so I'm glad that we can have this discussion in its entirety, seems to be related to another point that you traditionally bring up relative to our, I guess our Board of Equalization powers to alter valuations, recommendations of the Appraiser Register of Deeds relative to valuations. And I've heard you express concern before on that as well, about whether or not we have real powers to make those alterations. Is that right?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, these two things, in my mind, are related to what you're getting at is the exercise of county board power to alter recommendations either of the county treasurer or the board, the Register of Deeds assessor on valuing properties, whether they're tax-exempt properties or taxable properties.
If I may, and also, the third thing is, the third problem I see is when the, Mr. Goodwilly comes down and make a recommendation on personal property that, you know, Joe Dog's candy shop forgot to file the furniture or something and I don't believe we have the authority to overturn what the assessor recommends.
Right.
I would like, if we don't have the authority, don't come down here.
Right. So, if I understand you correctly, you would like legislative clarifications and maybe legislative authority.
Right.
For us to do those things, to make those determinations.
Yes, or in the alternative, if that's too hot to handle, anybody would just say, the assessor and the treasurer make the decision, we don't hear anything about it.
Right.
Because we don't have the authority to overturn them. If we don't, don't bring them down here. It's smoke and mirrors to the taxpayers.
And I've heard you make this point on a number of different occasions. I'm interested in it. So, I guess I'd ask the county attorney, is this something that we should, oh, we have a new county attorney today as well.
We'll take your opinion.
Very youthful. The, the questions that we're talking about here relative to the county board's authority to make these changes in the recommendations of the treasurer or the Register of Deeds assessor.
It depends on which statute we're talking about, but there are occasions where the board can only, I'll go with the assessor's office, can go ahead and get rid of a penalty if it's wrongly imposed or wrongly calculated, but if it's just, but if it's just the fact that the taxpayer missed every single deadline, then no, there, there becomes a point at which this board cannot, cannot do anything for that taxpayer because, and my advice is follow the law and I've heard, I know you all have heard me say that. And so, there does become a point where the board doesn't have wiggle room. And I don't know if what you're proposing is, can you give the taxpayer a month where the board could abate the penalty for good cause shown, but I think that if you continue out the deadline, there will still be some taxpayers who will miss that additional deadline as well and the board needs to understand that.
Okay, well, I'm waiting because it's time and it's, you've got your neck, so it's only your time.
Okay.
It's your time.
So, basically, thank you.
You get a chance. Commissioner Boyle, it's you, your next.
Am I up now?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not talking about that phrase you used every single time. I'm talking about, you know, and we do support the assessor when some of those people come down and they fail to do all those things. We don't blanket, I don't blanket, say, oh, hell with it, they blew every deadline, 18 deadlines, they don't answer the mail, so let's give them a break. I'm not doing that. What I'm saying is that when we come down and we've got somebody here who blew the first deadline or whatever it is on a case-by-case basis, I don't, the goal is this, I don't want taxpayers being told, come on down and make an appeal, when there is no appeal. Either we have the, they can hear appeal and say, we reversed it, we, we give them the exemption, or we can go ahead and support the assessor, the treasurer, wherever it is. But I don't want them sending down things over which we have no choice. So, that's what I'm trying to get after. So, either give us the choice to say, yes, we give you the exemption, make that legal, which we've done in the past. I run into tax people who give me a hard time from the state, say, oh, you're the one who does that. Yeah, I am. So, anyway, the deal is, either give us the authority to overturn those things, if it is truly a recommendation, or get us out of the program. Just let the assessor and the treasurer send them a letter and say, you don't get it. You don't get the exemption and you have no appeal. Tough. Because it's not an appeal down here. If we can't change it, it's not truly an appeal and that's not right to do that to a taxpayer.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I think we have at least three different kinds of appeals that we're talking about here. We're talking about these automobiles that the treasurer recommends.
Yeah.
Okay. The, the ruling on your recommendation, I guess. Okay. Then we have two forms of property that fall under, perhaps Mr. Goodwilly could come down and share his wisdom with us, relative to personal property determinations and real property determinations made by the Assessor Register of Deeds. So, the three different categories of property that we're talking about here. And Mr. Goodwilly, I, I understand Mr. Kavanaugh's position and I think I agree with it relative to recommendation only from the treasurer's office. We're making the determination.
Sure.
Relative to these other two forms of property, the personal property and the real property that come under your jurisdiction.
Well, let me, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds, let me try and unspool this a little bit.
Good.
Because a lot of this is kind of getting, you know, mixed together and I think we're not necessarily communicating. The, the stuff that we have, let's, let's start with the easy case first and that is when we value property and somebody files a, an appeal, or a protest rather, and it goes to the referee and the referee makes a recommendation to you folks in the early part of August. You know, one of the discussions that I sat down to hear was, well, you know, do we have authority to do anything about that or those values? And the answer to that is you do.
The answer to that is what?
That you do. The referee, when, when somebody files a normal valuation protest in, in June and the referee's made a recommendation, you can accept that recommendation or not accept that recommendation. That's, that's your, that's your process. Now, you guys can quibble internally about, do you have adequate information when those recommendations are presented to you to make a coherent decision about whether you wanna follow the referee's recommendation or not, but that's, that's up to you. You're not prohibited from rendering an opinion, a ruling on value in response to one of those protests. So, that's the first thing. The question, that, you certainly have the power to do that. The question is, given the information you have in front of you, do you want to? And I can't make that call for you. The, the second item are things like homesteads and we call permissive exemptions, churches, charities, people that have to apply for exemption. And in those circumstances, people have the right to protest our recommended denial of those exemptions. And there is nothing that specifically limits your ability to rule on those protests except the statutory language, which usually makes those deadlines shall mandatory.
Yep.
And so, I guess in that scenario, it depends on how comfortable you are with breaking the, the law. I mean, with, with the language the legislature chose. And by the way, the Supreme Court doesn't think these deadlines are a joke. I can cite you a case if you want it. I don't have the exact site in front of me, but it's the Indian Hills Church. They had a, a case from, in Lancaster County some time back where they clearly missed the deadline and, and the Supreme Court said, yeah, the legislature wasn't joking. When they use the word shall, they mean it's mandatory. So, the second group are circumstances where there isn't anything that limits your ability to rule in an overt way, except the mandatory statutory language. And then the third group that Commissioner Boyle is talking about are instances where we have applied a, a personal property penalty for late filing or omitted personal property. And in that scenario, the legislature is very specific about the grounds that the board can use to grant relief. There are two grounds. If the property, if the penalty is incorrectly applied, meaning they did too file on time or they didn't leave that property off, the assessor just made a mistake. Or if the penalty is incorrectly calculated. Quite frankly, so, so there is, there is potential for relief, but only under those two scenarios. And I think the reason is, the legislature knew that people wouldn't like getting penalty notices and they'd come down to the county board and they'd tell a tale of, whoa, my, my bookkeeper was sick, my dog ate my homework, you know, whatever the hell the excuse is. And it actually gives you guys an out to be able to say, well, gee, I'm sorry, Fred, you didn't file on time and you didn't list all your personal property, we can't, we can't grant your protest. You know, just being late and forgetting the deadline isn't quite good enough. So, so that's the third scenario and that has very overt language that limits your ability to, to grant protests. There's a larger question here too and Commissioner Boyle always, this is, this is one of his favorite topics is, you know, why should, you know, if we can't do this or we can't do that, you know, why should there even be a, an appeal or protest mechanism at all? And I think there's a, I think there's a due process.
Okay, Mike, hold on because we, you, this time thing is creeping in.
I apologize, Commissioner.
Commissioner Boyle is, is his time up, so if he wants to let you continue, answer that on his time, that's why.
I was hoping you'd characterize my actions. Anyway, here's the deal. Here's, I, I made some notes, okay? On the Board of Equalization, I think that is a real, it's a, it's a farce. I don't mean what you do and what we do now that, but this is developed into, the Board of Equalization, the last, the last time we approved it, I don't believe we made, pulled one of the 5,000-plus, 6,000-plus appeals out and changed anything. We don't have time. I mean, the clerk does a great job. They sorted by percentage. They show, you know, the highest percentage is usually a mistake, you know, 4,000% increase or whatever it is. And then it goes down, which is really helpful. And we get down to the median and you start looking at things to try to see who's getting, you know, and you get some phone calls and so forth, but it's very difficult for us to do. Then we have to go up to our referee. It's a very cumbersome system. I, but I think I'm the only one who does any of this stuff because I, I, well, anyway, I, I do. So, two, three years ago, out of the, I think it was 6,000 or 7,000 appeals we had, I made a motion to change three. One was Casio's Restaurant that had a bad roof and they were doing a lot of changes and they got, and it was reduced. The next one was the Quinn Home up on Dodge Street across from UNO, was reduced by $800,000 or so, an attorney came down. The last one was Louis Sully, who's a physician's assistant, lives next door to Mary R. Queen. His home stands out among all the others. It was, no, we didn't, we didn't change his. So, we got two out of the three of the 7,000 that were, that the referees went through. So we got two out of the three of the 7,000 that were, that the referees went through. It's impossible for us to do it, because you just can't. It's worse than a fire hose. So it, it is, again, first of all, the Board of Equalization is all by itself. That should be abolished. I asked the county attorney, "Who has authority to set the valuation of property in the county?" And the answer was, "The county assessor, register of deeds." So go for it. Take us out of the program. Because it's, it's smoke and mirrors for the taxpayers. We can't make adjustments. It's impossible. The volume's too big, the time's too short. That's the end of that one. Homesteads, you know, okay, well, this, this is really dramatic, because these are lots of times, most of the time, elderly people, you know, we supported you on that deal recently where the family came in and said, "My dad's going to go back home." No, we did, we said, "No, the assessor's right. We don't beat you up every time." But when the, when the homestead, when the homestead exemption comes down, I, I just think that that's such an incredibly good program to keep people in their homes, that we ought to be granting those. And, and so we don't have discretion. So, you know, and the last one is the personal property, you know, it, you are not making mistakes. When you come down, you are not incorrect on the amounts you've assessed, and you have not, it is not a, a mistake. You haven't, those two reasons that we can change things, you don't commit. We cannot change any personal property penalties you put on, because you're, you're doing your work. You're correct. What I'm driving at is totally lift yourself up from there and look down from 30,000 feet. We can't change those. You didn't make a mistake. It's not incorrectly calculated. So those are the only two reasons why we can change.
But let me, but let me be the devil's advocate, Commissioner. If, if we've correctly applied the penalty, and we've, and it's been correctly calculated, why should you change those?
I'm not saying we do. Don't bring them down here. Don't bring them to us.
First place, we don't bring them. The people file a protest.
Yeah.
Because state law allows them to file a protest.
Well, that's what I.
And even though when we notify them in their penalty notice, that the only reason the board can grant relief is if it's incorrectly applied or incorrectly calculated, you know what happens? They file anyway.
I know it.
Okay, let's pivot.
So, so that's not on us, Commissioner.
Let's pivot, because we've had this, let's pivot, because we've had this argument back and forth several times.
Yes, yes, we have.
So where are we, where are we?
I'm not blaming you.
Okay.
Okay, these are the things I want changed.
So we get, we list, we got a motion on the floor. Does somebody want to amend this, or do we want to pass it and give back?
Yes.
Okay. What's your amendment, Commissioner Gav?
I think Commissioner Boyle raises some extremely important and complex questions that would benefit by us laying this over for a couple weeks, so we could clarify that and get it incorporated into our thing. So I, I would move that we lay this over until our next regularly scheduled county board meeting.
Well, we're gonna, you're gonna walk into a meeting next Monday.
Well, that's fine.
If you all are fine with that, you can file it.
Well, I, I would like to discuss this.
Well, wait a minute, there's a, there's a motion to.
Well, I'll second it.
Lay it over. There's a sec, motion to, to second to lay this over until.
And I'll speak to that motion.
The next meeting, which is the 10th, Commissioner Boyle.
I speak to it. These are three items that we can consider and pass the other agenda, so we can talk at the Thompson meeting with our state senators. But these three do need to be attended to, and they, they really do. So let's, I agree with Mr. Kavanaugh that we should lay these over, but approve the other ones and move forward. You know, I really think we need to. So I, that's why I second it.
So what, what is the mo, is the motion to lay over five, or is the motion to lay over the whole thing? You seconded the whole thing. Do you want five?
Well, I'll leave it up to him, but I, I don't know that we.
You're saying the whole thing.
We don't need to lay the whole thing.
Yeah, but, I mean, we can talk to the senators about it, whatever we want to talk to the senators about. But I, I, I would say for clarification purposes, let's just lay this over, because there are other, other items on here that I would have some discussion with Marcos or whoever. So we can do it all at once, that'd be great.
There's a motion to lay this over until December 10th? Motion to second?
Roll call. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
No.
Commissioner Kraft?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
No.
Commissioner Chair?
Uh, no.
Motion fails.
Okay, then I would, I would move that, well, I, I don't have any problem with what's on here, so I'll move for the passage, and we can.
There's already a motion for passing.
I'm sorry.
There's already a motion for passing.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. I think you all are good. Somebody in the audience wanted to speak, they came up.
Hey, Mike, thanks for coming up. I'll be in touch. Tim, I'll be in touch.
Larry Store, 501-Five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I enjoyed that discussion. I'm here as a taxpayer that does not have a lobbyist. I guess I, I thought that you people were my lobbyists. So I'd like to know if it's permissible to be more transparent about what you're talking with them about down there. I'd like to feel comfortable that you're representing my interests. And then, based on what we've just listened to, who's paying for this lunch that you're going to talk to the state legislators with? Is that out of my billfold? To a certain extent, yeah. Do I get to know what you're talking to them about, what you're lobbying them about, and what you're paying for lobbyists to lobby them about? Nothing is in, nothing on here about that. And I don't know that, it doesn't say C attachment, so where do I go to find out what it is you're Commissioner Boyle said something about, "Don't bring them down here." Well, citizens think this is where they come. And we're told in the newspaper and everything that we have to come down here for these hearings. And then we have to come in here for these protests. So, you know, who has the ultimate authority? It's kind of like the liquor license thing. They have to come in here, but then they get told they gotta go down there to get it. Or to go down there to get it, reject it. It does, it gets passed from here to there, but citizens think this is where it gets done. And it's on the agendas, and it's talked about in the papers, but then you say, "You gotta go down there." And then you guys be with them for lunch, but we don't know what you're talking about. So let's have some more transparency. And a simplification of the rules, so maybe the protesters know that they can't come down here, because the law says "shall," and "shall" means that's cut and dried. Maybe means, maybe that isn't. And "may" means you may or you may not. It's kind of like Article Five of the Constitution. You have to diagram that paragraph, because there's all those words in it, "shall," "may," and "will." There's a difference. Thank you, Mike.
Mike, I'm gonna call you out of order. This is not, this is a slippery slope. I'm gonna call you out of order.
I'm just, I'm just making a statement.
No, I'm a, no, I'm gonna call you out of order on this. You can't walk both roles. You're a commissioner on this. I'm gonna call you out of order. Any other citizens in the, in the audience that want to comment on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I, I respect.
I'm gonna call, I know I respect you, too, but I'm gonna call you out of order, and I'm asking you, because no, this is not citizens' comments, this is a select agenda item, where you're a commissioner, and by the rules, you've had that, so I'm a, I'm gonna call you out of order.
We'll be to the advantage of the taxpayers. Another, another tally I was talking about.
I, I agree. I hear you, and I, and I would love to do it, but this sets a precedent that this is, this is a clear deal, so I'm gonna call you out of order. Okay? That's fine. That's the ruling of the chair to that degree. There is a, I'm gonna call you out of order, and I'm gonna ask you to respect that rule. If you want to talk there, that's fine. There's a motion and a second, I mean, there's a motion and a second right now, and I'm gonna ask if that conversation goes. Can you go? Commissioner Kavanaugh, you want to recommend amendment? Okay, what's your amendment?
Yeah, I'll make one quick, right?
Very quick.
Here's an example. People, people don't quite understand. He's also a citizen.
Yes, but not in this role. It's clear.
And he just said, "This is for citizen comments."
Yeah, and he's a clearly.
And then you, and then you call him on order.
I hear you, thank you.
I'm sure he could have interrupted you, but he got up here as a citizen.
Yeah, and that's, this is clearly, Commissioner Kavanaugh. What's your amendment?
Yes. So, based on what we're hearing here, obviously, there's, you know, a lot of, I guess, lack of clarity, both among taxpayers and citizens and among the, the board, relative, not only to number five, but, you know, to the, to the rest of these, which are, if we were in a court of law, would be thrown out, because they are void for vagueness. You know, number one says juvenile justice related and information more accessible.
I'm asking you to get to your, to your amendment, though.
I'm just contexting it. I mean, the, the, number two says, "Take local control of juvenile justice and public health," which we already have. Number four says, "The Attorney General shall take purview." Good luck drafting a law that says they take purview.
Again, I'm gonna ask you, Commissioner, what's your amendment?
And finally, I'm, I'm getting to it.
Okay.
The fifth one that we've been discussing here, relative to taxation and Commissioner Boyle's suggestions. So if we're not going to lay over all of these, I'm going to abstain on this. It's kind of a joke of a laundry list. I, I would hate to be the lobbyist, has to take this down to Lincoln, but we owe it to ourselves to really discuss number five, and so I would ask that we amend it to lay over number five on this rather vague agenda, for more particular language along the lines that Commissioner Boyle has been very rightfully recommending. I mean, we should have clarity here. So number five, lay over number five would be my.
There's, there's a motion to lay over number five. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second by Commissioner Boyle. Mr. Clerk?
Are you? Yeah, Commissioner Boyle?
No, are you ready for roll call? There's a motion to lay over number five. Motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh.
No, I'm ready, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
No.
Commissioner Kraft?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
No.
Commissioner, Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes. Fails three, three.
Okay, so motion fails three, three.
All righty. With that, there's a motion to second on the floor. Roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?
No.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
No.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All righty. That's item three. We do have a need for an executive session, but before we go into it, let me read that first, and then we'll, I'll, I'll give you a moment. We reserve the right to go, enter into executive session in order to protect the public's interests with respect to discussion regarding labor negotiations and litigation. All righty. There are motion to second to go into executive session. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan, briefly. Commissioner Morgan?
Labor, litigation. Call for the vote, is that right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he was recognizing somebody else.
No, you wanted to brief.
Oh.
I had a request from Jamie Rumah about her daughter having a special project in the third grade. Taylor, who is behind me here, who will be going back to her school, and she had a lot of questions to ask about county government, and I invited her not only to ask the questions, but she could come down here this morning and kind of watch what we do, sorta. And real a privilege for me to have Taylor here, so stand up, Taylor. Hopefully someday you might be able to. Thanks for being here, and we appreciate your mother allowing that, and your dad, so that was great. Thank you.
And if I may, I think we should ask her for a speech. About 15 or 20 minutes.
No. She didn't, but she had one.
I lost, I lost the vote.
Thank you, Mom.
Thank you, Taylor.
Well, thanks a lot for coming by, that's great. Thanks, Commissioner Morgan.
You bet.
We do have a motion to second, roll call.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Labor negotiations and litigation.[1304.36]
Commissioner Boyle is absent, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair. Motion passes. All Commissioners present voting yes.[1760.74][1760.74][Music]